Let's start with calling the meeting to order and first thing I want to do is welcome everyone here tonight. Appreciate you coming out here to our council meeting tonight. I'll declare our pledge of allegiance and then Keith Nichols is going to have our invitation for us to last our pledge. Tim, would you start, fortunately?
Pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we again thank you for this day that you've given us and Lord, we again thank you for the ones that are chosen to serve the city and Lord, we know that they're elected by the people, Lord, but they're here because of divine appointment. You have had them here for a reason, Lord, and I pray that you will just keep them mindful of that. Give them knowledge and wisdom as they make the decision for the city. In Jesus' name, amen.
First item on the agenda, the guidance approved amendments from our last meeting. Is there a motion to approve those amendments?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, great. Is there a second?
I'll second.
In favor, say aye.
Uh, uh.
Thank you. Second item on the agenda tonight is to approve the council's payables. Is there a motion to approve those council payables?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any more discussion on that? In favor, say aye. Third item is the mayor's recommendation to hire Will Bailey as part-time chairman for his student at the rec center with an hour degree of 725. And he has been replacing Ashley Watson and was hired, but she has chosen to quit. Now, if he has any problems, he has decided what's he going to do. This is her senior year and she wanted to do something else for the rest of her year. And the mayor has recommended to honor Will Bailey. Is there a motion to...
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
What hours is this, Mayor?
Sir?
What hours?
He works 15 hours in the same as rest of us.
So, I mean, what time to start?
They got 3 hours shifts, 3:00, 6:00, 6:09.
Do what?
3:00, 6:00, 6:09. And then they work some Saturdays and some Sundays.
But number one and 52?
That's supposed to be.
That's supposed to be. Okay. I'll second. Unless there's some more discussions.
Okay. Motion's second. Is there a vote on that? In favor, say aye.
Uh, uh.
Number four, we've had a meeting here from the proxy and the Howard members since discussion. His recommendation for me to consideration of ordinance number 2013, dash 12, to rezone the city limits of Hamilton and adopt a new zone of ordinance, which we've had for a while. Is there a motion to adopt this in a second? And then before we vote on it, I can get Nathan to address this if you want to. We'll get a minute consideration to start.
I'll make a motion, please.
Okay, great.
I'll second.
Okay. In favor, say aye. All right. Before we go into a recommendation to approve the ordinance, I'd just, Nathan wouldn't care to address this. Nathan, just tell us why we're doing this tonight and what it's about. And if the council has anything you want to ask him before we vote.
Sure.
I don't think anyone's...
You come up front.
Yeah.
Thank you.
More standing up.
Right there, Stan.
I don't think anyone is unaware of the fact that we've been in several months of review of a new draft of zoning ordinance of map for the city of Hamilton. We've had, I believe, counting tonight, at least four public hearings as well as two planning commission meetings since we initially started this where we talked about what changes were most desirable and we reviewed the ordinance and we talked about changes to the map and the way that the zoning ordinance should be drafted and will be enforced moving forward. I think we've got a good ordinance. I think it makes some changes that are very positive for the city of Hamilton. The planning commission did recommend in favor of the ordinance being adopted by the city council and so naturally it comes down to these ladies and gentlemen on the council to make a final decision about that. But I would be perfectly happy to address any outstanding questions regarding the ordinance or any other matter.
The map's not correct, right? There's several parcels on there. It's not correct.
That is correct, yes. To say as easily as possible, the map that we have now uses the city limits that were incorporated in a previous zoning map, which was never intended to be used for anything other than zoning administration. What we've attempted to do is to get a better text for enforcing the zoning district boundaries as well as the non-conforming uses. And in the process, we've had several property owners come forward to address the need to change the map. That information needs to be incorporated in a map on parcel-by-parcel basis with reference to the probate office records and the city council records. It was our recommendation and the planning commission's recommendation that the council go ahead and adopt these maps as the administrative, or this map as the administrative boundary for enforcing the zoning ordinance with the understanding that if an individual cannot be shown that they were correctly incorporated into the city limits, that their administrative processes and eventually legislative processes, they'll come back for the council and inform the map amendments that will address those.
But you basically did a starting point to address some of the bigger questions and get forward in that.
Indeed. And any particular entity with jurisdiction that utilizes a map with city limits on it for the enforcement of whatever area of local government that is under the jurisdiction is going to run into similar problems such as this, whether it's the tax assessor's office or the zoning office or voting registrars or even the U.S. Census Bureau, which I might add, the U.S. Census Bureau is the source of the information that we were incorporating into the current maps.
One thing else that I've been, like I said, I can't get here from 5 o'clock when we have these meetings. I thought one that I saw, I don't know if it's on that map or not, looked like it's some commercial property. It's not zone commercial.
We've made every effort through a comprehensive land use inventory where we've gone parcel by parcel and actually observed both from aerial photographs and physically through a windshield survey of the property on ground. We've made every effort to try to incorporate commercial zoning on parcels that are currently commercial or that we know are intended to be developed for commercial in the future. In a case like that, if we did miss something, there is a rezoning procedure that is available to the property owner if they are, if they choose or if they wish or they believe that we erred in not appropriately zoning that property to the end.
Well, after meeting, you've done a good job on trying to get this done correctly. Did, and we spent the last year trying to get this squared away. Seems like it's basically a waste of a year on what it looks to me like. And I appreciate your help, but if it's not on there, can people come down here and get it changed? Are we going to have to charge them $300 to get it changed like some other people's had to pay?
Or is that going to work?
The council has set a permit fee or a, I'm sorry, a review fee for changing the zoning. That fee is within the discretion of the city council to change, amend, forego, delay, or adjust as y'all see fit. If you wanted to suspend that for a period of time so that we could have an administrative period in which folks could come down and make those corrections and then come to the council without charging them, that's certainly within the council's prerogative to do so. Any changes to the map, once it is adopted, will have to go through the planning commission and then come to the city council to be changed.
Where have these people been the last three months? Where have these people been the last three months? I mean, that's the purpose of the meeting that we had. If you don't like where you're at or what you're going to be, you should have been at that meeting.
We have.
This is a work in progress. I can't ever see that it will ever be finished because there's always going to be issues that's going to come up. And quite frankly, I think it's just a case by case. And we're certainly open and willing and so are you, as it's been the whole time, to try to get this resolved as best we can. Now, I know the map is not exactly right, but we've got to have something adopted here that we'll have a foundation to rely on, is the way I see it. And I'm certainly for people having their wishes and whatever, if they wish to be in or they wish to be out or whatever, and we want it correctly zoned as much as we can be. But, you know, I've reviewed this, like we've said off and on for the last year, and I can't say 100% certainty of it being black and white. It's just like this lady back here. She's had an issue with it. It's something that I feel like eventually can be worked out. I think it all can. But it's just a case by case. And like me and Sam, you know, we've been dealing with this for all these months and it's time to get something done and to move on.
All that off-white on that map basically is agriculture, correct?
Yes, sir. It's within an FAR district, a forestry, agricultural, residential district.
Okay. So, if you live in that and somebody wants to put four chicken houses across from you, as long as you're in that district, they can do that?
Poultry houses are not specifically allowed in the FAR district. Commercial agricultural operations aren't disallowed in the Ag district. So, we have tried to address that by disallowing those large-scale poultry and pork farms and things that would be incompatible with...
What do you call it, agriculture, then, that can be used in that, besides road cropping?
Farming, livestock that don't qualify as cathos or promote agricultural farming operations. What we've tried to do is keep the agriculture more compatible with residential uses that might be found in a rural residential area inside the city of Hamilton. So, the smells and nuisances and things of that nature are kept in mind.
So, there's nowhere in the city limits of Hamilton that somebody can come in and put up four pebble fried or Marshall Durbin chicken houses?
That is correct.
This ordinance here is much better than what we've got previously. Like, if we don't adopt this tonight, we're still going by the old one, which is a whole lot more restrictive to him than what we're fixing today.
I understand that.
All we've tried to do is make it simpler. And that's all we've tried to do.
This whole thing, in my opinion, this is my opinion.
I know. You don't like it.
No, it's hard to see the limits out. You've got people that's not wanting to build here. And all this other that you're going around here and trying to...
I know several houses being built here. At least six.
Well, I know contractors won't even build them since the limits out.
That's because they haven't been built by the things, but...
Now, they're good contractors. They're working right across the street up there.
I know what you're talking about.
But that is nothing but hurting to see the house.
Well, what's that stand up and watch right?
Well, Nathan and I...
I am too.
Nathan and I talked 20, 25 minutes and he's answered most of my questions. The amendments, the things that I pointed out, the things that need to be addressed, when, if we adopt this tonight, is that going to have to go back before the planning commission? And they're going to have to approve it? And then it'll come back to us and we'll have to adopt the changes? Or how is that going to...
Yes. Any change to the ordinance after it is adopted this evening, we'll have to go back through the planning commission. The ordinance, as it's been advertised, contains its provisions as they're written, any major or substantial changes to that need to be re-advertised. Once this ordinance is adopted, if there are things such as, and Tammy has pointed out, some of the spellings on my part, a couple of places where the zoning itself is internally inconsistent. Things to do, I agree, need to be changed. But what we can do in that case is we can introduce them independently to the planning commission and bring them to the council, or we can piggyback them on any requested changes to the map that someone might have.
You made that sound like I was picking on your spelling. There was just one place and I read it out loud. Have you corrected it yourself?
Oh, I won't pick on myself if I'm wrong.
Okay. Well, we'll say you found it when I read it. But, so you're saying that if we adopt it tonight, then you will, you will make those changes and take them back to the planning and zoning at their next meeting?
I would suggest that the mayor and I talk about them, make sure that we have adequately addressed them and to the point where they can be introduced to the planning commission. And then they will be introduced to the planning commission at the next most convenient time. It being December, I'm not sure if we'll meet the last Monday of the month or not.
But I, but after, I know it's spelling it. But what changes could there be at this point that are not consistent?
There's a place where it says that fire trucks are allowed, but that vehicles are not allowed to be stored on that side.
Fire stations are allowed, but no equipment in those trucks.
And it is within a provision that allows for utility substations and a number of other uses where you might not want to have a lot of vehicles just crammed on one lot because there are instances where, not y'all's utilities, but other utilities might not be polite enough to screen their stuff and it looks like a junkyard, that sort of thing.
You got roads in here, Ed, and you got to have so many parking spaces for grease racks. How many grease racks? You got your service station. Stuff like that that don't, to me, that don't even make no sense.
Well, there's a purpose for it. It wouldn't be in there. I mean, there's some things you got to use common sense and discretion. I mean, you can't, we can nitpick anything today, anything.
Well, the big thing to me was about the fire station because we have talked about the station out there on 278. And when you read that, I mean, that's just, it's not a lot. And to me, that's, I mean, that's something that we need. That's something that we've talked about. We may not be able to afford it next year.
I agree.
But it needs to be corrected and we need to be able to do it if and when we get the money. And...
But that wouldn't keep us from doing it if we read it.
Without it being changed. I mean, we have phone rules, too?
We do. But I'm saying, if the time come and we want to build a fire station, we'll build a fire station. If we have to change it, then.
Then what if somebody else comes up here, wants to build something, we going to change it for them?
I think you have to look at each individual...
I think you got to take it. That's what I'm saying. You can't. There's no perfect policy. There's no perfect amendment or ordinance. And, you know, we can, we can change something every week for the next six months. You're still in the same boat. The point is, you know, if we feel comfortable with what we got tonight, fine. If we don't, put it off for two more weeks. I don't really care.
You know, you might have stayed if you didn't care if it took two years. I'm like, I'm like you. I want to get it right. And you said, doesn't matter if it took us two years to get it right.
Well, time...
And I agree with you.
Well, I'm thinking the ordinance, to me, Tim, is more important to getting that done than is the map. The map, I don't care if it takes two years because we know for a fact it's not correct. But we got to have a map with our new ordinance. We have to.
But I just don't want to charge people like we did with Wes. All them people, every $100.
We have the discretion not to do that anymore if we want to.
Well, we need to pay them people the money back.
No, we don't. But while we're doing this, we can, we can, while we're doing any kind of changes, we can suspend any of those things. I don't have a problem with that. The only reason we charge is with cover the cost, the oil cost to put their paper. That's what that is covered.
It just covered that and nothing else.
We didn't make a dime off of that.
I don't think it took the whole $300, did it, Ed?
We reduced it to 150.
Probably.
It was 300. It's been reduced to 150.
Yeah, that's probably it. I agree.
So, that was covered the cost. Ed doesn't know the cost. That's another department.
Jammed at the 150.
I'm not bloody worried, can you?
The cost of 300 or whatever. So, that took care of that. City made no money on that.
We made money on each side.
Did any of y'all find anything else in there that y'all questioned?
I mean, I'm going, when it comes up, I'm going to trust nothing on it and common sense. And when we, it comes up, we'll, I'll deal with it and the rest of you can do as you personally feel. I just feel like we need a foundation to work from. I would think we need to be sitting here with that old one.
Well, I'm going to admit, when I read it, when I read through it all, the sections that said reserved, I was just ignorant and I assumed that that meant it went back to the old ordinance, that there were no changes. And Nathan has enlightened me tonight and told me that those sections are actually the ones that were omitted. And so, I don't know what's been omitted.
You know, I tried to read through it again last night on computer there. And I needed you here, I needed you there to ask, by every sentence I read, to ask a question or Scott one. You know, about yard space and all that and such as that, you know, I just didn't understand all that.
Most of that's been reduced.
Built back and got the yard. It's just too, too, too. I don't know. It's just too complicated, looks to me like. And you told me before that one we're operating on now, one of the strictest ones, you'd ever seen for a city this size. But you weren't involved in the, the doing to the last minute.
That's what is going to continue until we adopt the new ordinance. It's still going to be one of the strictest for a town our size. That's the reason we needed the changes made.
So, basically, we're in a position tonight, we either keep the old one that's strict or we go with the new one that I personally think needs to have some things changed in it, which nobody else would agree with. Y'all weren't up here when I was talking to Nathan, so I don't know. I guess I'll have to fight that battle when it comes time to try to change it.
Nathan, I'd like to say I appreciate your efforts and I don't think any of this has been a waste of time. And I'd like to make a motion to pass this.
If the map's not right, how can we pass it?
That's been talked about several times. Tim, Nathan explained it, the map can... The ordinance is what we need, even though we know the map is still going to have to have some adjustments. The map may never be right. But you got to have the map to have an ordinance to go by. Is that not correct?
That is correct, yes.
So, what would be the purpose of putting this off until we get a map correctly, knowing that we need a new ordinance?
I was saying, tell you to go look at that map and say what you're going to zone and what you aren't going to zone.
If I could just address that.
Can you clear that up? Because I think that might help.
The map is going to show where the city intends to enforce the zoning ordinance. The only time that the zoning ordinance requires enforcement is when a property owner wants to do something differently with their property. If the city observes that an individual is doing something that is not legal under the zoning ordinance with their property and approaches that individual and says, "We have a problem." And the individual believes that the city does not have the right to enforce that ordinance, then it is incumbent on the city to show that they have the authority to enforce the ordinance. And that's what, that's what we meant when we said it would be on a case-by-case basis. So, what we will do is strive in every way possible to document which parcels are in and which parcels are out. But there's a lot that's tied up with the notion of the city limits that's beyond zoning. There's also voting districts. There's also property taxes. This is to be applied just in the enforcement of the city's zoning ordinance. And we will make every administrative and eventually legislative change that's necessary to get it as close to right as possible. But there are known problems with the existing zoning laws. And the changes that we recommend in the text of the ordinance and the current map address some of those, not all of those, but as much of them as we, planning commission, council, public in these meetings have been able to get some consensus around. They don't address the other problems with that are part and parcel of the city limits that's not truly mapped out and well-known, such as voting precincts and property tax. But those problems are going to exist whether or not this ordinance is adopted this evening. And that's why the planning commission made the recommendation to go forward this evening because they are seeing, and the council over the last few years has seen a lot of problem areas that we can address through the text of the ordinance. And then we can work toward addressing the other stacked problems that are to do with the city limits.
Okay. I believe that some of us was at that last meeting with him and the zoning board. We had to wait to get somebody...
Well, we had another one.
Finally have come in there. And the people, a lot more of the time crossing the bike Chevrolet. And what got worked out on that? Did they go ahead and do what they're doing? That wasn't zoned right?
Well, they came to our last zoning meeting, which was Monday.
I can't even think of their minutes. Within your staff, it's the minutes from the planning commission.
They have got their work down.
And someone's like, Nathan, that there are different issues here. I mean, talking about the map and talking about the zoning ordinance, just like you said, there are going to be issues with that map about whether or not you're voting, you're paying taxes and where, well, where within there it lies. So, like you said, some of these problems are existing, whether or not either one of the others is there or not there.
Well, I just wish we had had the public hearing tonight and voted on it next time because that way I could soak in everything that Nathan told me. I could go back and look at what all was omitted that I thought was really in there because I didn't understand it. And...
How long has, how long have you been working on this?
Several months.
Several months.
You get paid to go through it.
Well, he's the guru. He's an encyclopedia busy. He knows his business. And I completely trust and have confidence in him. And yes, he is getting paid for it, but that's, no, he's not getting paid for it. We pay NACOG a year. That's a service that they provide for. So, I really vote on it.
I just think, I just think a lot of it is just making it a lot more difficult than it really needs to be.
There is. That's right.
I mean, I'm like Lynn on that. These people, it's plain. Where they been for the last how many months?
Well, I will take it for some of them, they have been here and their problems still have not been addressed. I mean, there's, there's still these issues.
Will they be, you know, Tammy, in all respect to them and to us, will they be five years from now? I still go back to the fact, we've got to have something to rely on. And we are all of the same consensus that last, the last ordinance was not adequate enough. That's why we have spent all this time trying to make changes. Is there going to be a perfect one? I doubt it.
If the changes she's talking about were incorporated, would we have to advertise it again?
Not the complete ordinance, just the changes.
Just the changes.
Amendments, if it were adopted this evening, amendments would have to be advertised. They'd have to go to the planning commission, then the advertisement to the council. They have to follow the amendment procedure. But the rules, by and large, that are in the text of the ordinance would be in place.
But you couldn't, you couldn't just change it as you go along and say, as amended tonight. You'd have to have the amendments later. We got a motion on the table. Lynn made a motion. So, if there's a second, we'll vote, we'll vote it down, put it off, or whatever. That's what I'm thinking.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? In favor, say aye. In your focus.
No. May I wish you, I've told you several times, I wish you that way that I could get here and have these public meetings.
Tim, I didn't say that.
Who did?
Well, when we just, when, I guess the NACOG, whoever called, but...
The NACOG don't work for us.
I know they don't. But the public, you've asked all the questions right now.
They work for us.
We didn't do any final...
I probably had a little bit more.
In the hearing, well, Ed, I would like to ask that maybe next time we have a public hearing and then we put off the vote because I personally have to think about some things. I mean, once I hear things and I listen to Ms. Young tonight, and she's been here before and I've talked to Tim and he's been here before. And I sort of like to think about things just a little bit. I mean, there's some things that...
I have thought about it for several months.
I have.
Read it upside down, one side to the other.
We have amended. Do you think these be amended? We can still do that.
Yeah, we...
That's not a problem. It's not that complicated. We can still amend any kind of question or problem that you have with the ordinance. Tim, is it because you have to get off work? You have this and at 5 o'clock...
Yeah, I asked them to get going and took over. I couldn't get here for those meetings in the mayor's office and there. I can't get here at no 5:30 time. I got home this hour. I can't get here at no five-thirty time. I got home, shower, change out of uniform, get here and I can't come in uniform. And I just feel like it being down that way.
You ain't been singled out or nothing. Not one time you've been singled out.
Well, I told you, I can't get here.
And I don't have work sessions just so you can't be there.
Well, I'll not be, I'll not be in no more work session.
Well, you don't have to come to a work session. I don't give a damn if you come or not.
I won't be at one.
It don't make no difference to me if you come.
I won't be at one.
I mean, you're, you're a councilman elected to serve the people. If you don't want to come, then don't come.
Ain't no sense in having, having right here.
We don't have to have work sessions. I've only had them a few times. Really, I thought it was necessary.
I agree with you.
And I don't like it no more than you do, but I felt like giving you some information before we get to a meeting with a work session. If that works fine, if it don't, fine.
Well, I agree with Francis and him. I mean, I think Nathan's done a good job. I mean, if, if we can't trust him, we don't, we don't need him.
Do you feel like that I first, did you? Did you?
An appropriate amount, I'll say.
Okay. Did you understand my concerns?
I did.
Were they valid concerns?
I believe so.
Thank you very much.
All right, let's move on. Number six, this is something, some here, we don't have to do this tonight. What this is, a guy called me the other day and he had, we looked at the Munson Ware building before and in the building, in the basement, there's equipment down there that's hadn't been used in forty years. He's went down there, said, "Can you, can I meet you?" So yeah, I met him down there in one of the basement, looked at it and he offered five hundred dollars for a piece of equipment and I told him I thought that was not enough. He said, "Well, I'll give you eight hundred dollars for it." I talked to a couple of council members and what we can do, if you, if you want to sell this piece of equipment, we can sell it. If you want to take bids on selling everything in there and scrapping it all out, it's just scrap metal. It's all dead. It's good for nothing. This doesn't have to be voted on. But there's things in the basement, that's old equipment that can't be used. It's nothing but a hunk of steel, iron.
So what's, what's the process if somebody's interested in something?
What we do is we declare that piece of property, Jan, as unusable or...
No longer needed.
No longer needed for city purposes.
That's what I'm talking about. Because I've had people ask me about equipment that's in there and I, I assumed that it wasn't...
I thought you had to bid that old tank of a fire station.
Well, we put it on...
I thought you had to bid it.
They put it on...
Gov deals. We put it on gov deals and that's why I'm saying this, this is something I have put on there, but what we can do is take bids on any of that down there in that basement or anything in the top floor that's no longer needed. We can get some people that does scrap for a living. They can come look at all of us, all of it, make an offer for it, take bids on that one.
So do they say you to get an appointment to go over there?
They do. Why don't we make everything in the building no longer needed for municipal purposes?
Bid it out.
And take out the scrap equipment for eight hundred dollars and bid it out.
If you've got, if you've got this on the title...
Go ahead and sell this.
No.
Yeah, we just take that and do it all, all the way.
Just take, take that, take that out.
Oh, okay.
That's no problem.
I should just hear you.
We can do that.
Declaring equipment.
Declaring all equipment.
Or just not going to be the main for some of them.
No, all it'd be is just the overshooting and stuff that can't use anymore. Right.
How, how do you go about seven?
How'd that motion need to be, Jan? If we just make a motion to... Let's, let's not worry about the settlement argument. Let's just declare.
Just declare it no longer needed. Okay.
We'll, we'll look at that later.
Everything in there.
Yeah.
Not being used at all.
I've got recommendation to approve resolution number two thirteen twelve-two, declaring all equipment at the Munson Ware building no longer needed for municipal purposes. Here, stop right there.
Now, do we advertise it in the...
Well, we're just declaring it anyway.
Okay.
The sample will do it again.
Yeah, for sure.
So read that again, Jan.
Regulation to approve resolution number two thirteen twelve-two, declaring all equipment at the Munson Ware building no longer needed for municipal purposes.
Okay. Is there a motion to do that? I don't like a motion. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Any discussion? All in favor of the AI? What we'll move then is, is we can look at it and determine. See what's the best one.
I see. There's a lot of scrap. Could be several thousand dollars worth of scrap.
Those always have to be worth some work. There's several.
You know what my follow-up question's gonna be, Doug?
What, you don't have any more?
What, no, not, but that's another good question. But thank you. But also, basically the building itself, we, is there any update as far as what we're deciding?
No, we've just been in limbo because of other things going on right now. We haven't... You talking about the building?
Yes, about deciding what to do or to tear it down or to use it in general.
Well, the cost of getting, to see if it's feasible, was, was gonna require some engineers. It's pretty expensive until we find out what we're gonna do and other things that could cause us some trouble before we do that, so. I wouldn't give it to all down scrap now.
Remember, we got it at a halt.
Maybe, maybe...
We have to say.
Next year, maybe.
I hope. I don't know when you might be.
But maybe the, the scrap metal that you have in the building that you might be able to save and then whoever does the, the tear down, they can take that as a fee or as a partial fee.
What do you ever tear it down and go and be that part of where the customers collect their money?
Brian, you got something?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a clarification on that, that this property still does belong to the city and that this action that you're taking tonight is for the purpose of...
This equipment?
Of, of selling it and discarding it and getting rid of it the proper way. It's not free for access for at wheel and just come and get it because the city's not using it anyhow.
Anybody who looks at...
Thank you. That does that.
Anything to be told at all, probably doesn't have to be told at all.
Yeah, not, not necessarily. You invite the Blue Rangers to come in now.
The revenue, I imagine for that, they probably will be general fund or something like that, so.
Okay.
May I have a motion for going to executive session?
For what purpose?
Talk bad boys.
Is you gonna do anything when you get out?
Yeah, I wanted to say something. Your present now. I've had some questions about hunting in the city limits and someone was nice enough to put the ordinance four ninety-one in my box. Section three says it shall be unlawful for any person to shoot or discharge any firearm such that the discharge of said firearm is within a hundred yards of a residence of another or the path of the projectile from any such firearm crosses or strikes within a hundred yards of the premises of another. So I'm sure, I know that there was somebody that wanted to file a complaint last Wednesday and anyway, it's ordinance four ninety-one. If you need a copy of it.
Has that not been, that you could not fire a firearm within the city limits since we served before twenty-something years ago?
Yes, ma'am, except for there, there are exceptions, like she just read there, within limitations of yardage. Some of it is like the agricultural parts, the fields and stuff of this nature. There is a tolerance on there for dove hunting, like you can go outside of town here and be on the backside of the fields. You can dove hunt toward the highway and that's due to the fact that the projectile doesn't have enough velocity to make it to the highway. So a lot of the, the hunting, and there's a description also in there, I don't think she read about the type and caliber of weaponry that can be used within those limitations.
Well, was this not what, was it Nathan? Was this what, not what Nathan Broome was talking about with us taking him out, or a client, not Nathan, a client?
Yes, ma'am. He, he has created a firing range. It's just on the very outskirts of the... But a lot of this that she's referring to is some potential deer hunters inside the city limits and there's some nuisance areas that I have come in to make requests and I'll allow them to do it maybe one day where they're really overrun with squirrels. Some of them can't trap them, you know, so shoot them. Some of them they're properly disposed of. Some of them you need to actually do the squirrel dumpings and eat the squirrel stuff of their selves. So some of it is a pest control issue. Some of it is to control the freelance hunters because the hunting permits cover the state of Alabama. We just control inside the city limits as far as the yardage.
Okay. Tim, Tim's got a motion for going to executive session. Is there a second to do that? Talk about personnel. Can you say? All in favor of the AI? All right. When we come back, we're not gonna do the city business, right? Worth it with our agenda. Is that correct?
Sir?
Do you have anything to do when we get out of this executive session?
No, I don't have any.